And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for tuning in to Focus Springfield this evening. We have a special event that we think is of interest to everyone in the city of Springfield, and that's a debate of the 10 at-large city council candidates who you see seated next to me. Let me do a little bit of housecleaning to tell you what we're going to be doing tonight. We're going to start in this evening with each candidate speaking about themselves and what they hope to accomplish for the city for the time of one minute. After that, I'm going to be asking each candidate a question. Some of them will get similar questions to another; some of them will get completely different questions; we're going to mix it up a bit. Then when that round is over, we're going to go to our panelists. And tonight, we're privileged to have three people who will be asking three questions each: Matt Saffransky, who is in the center, Western Mass Politics and Insight; Elizabeth Roman of the Republican Mass Live; and Morgan Rannaney, who is the Springfield Central Cultural District Executive Director. Now, let me explain why this election is so important. In fact, Matt told me this, so I know it's right and correct because Matt is an expert. We haven't had this opportunity since 1991. That is, we have two at-large city councilors who have decided not to run for reelection. As you may know, running for at-large seats is a little bit more difficult than Ward, simply because you're running through the entire city, not just one part of the city. So regardless of what happens, we are going to see two new people on the council, guaranteed. It may be more than two, but definitely two. So this is the reason that this election is so important. Consider all the things that have gone on in the city of Springfield, from economic development to levels of crime, et cetera, et cetera. The city council is dealing with all that stuff, so you need to vote for the people who you believe are going to represent you the best and advocate for the city the best. That's why this election is very important; that's why Focus Springfield wanted to devote the time and energy to do this particular debate tonight. So we're going to go through the candidates to have them introduce one another, in themselves, I should say, alphabetically. So first to introduce himself will be Tom Ash. Now, to let all the candidates know, we have a young man sitting over there with a bell. Ring the bell, please. There we go. He is going to ring it at the 45-second mark to let you know that you've got 15 seconds left. And then after that, he'll ring it again when the minute is over. Then we apply the electrocatalod prod to you in order to get you to be quiet. This is a joke. We don't really have electrocatalod prod. So we're going to, because there's so many candidates, we're going to be insistent on keeping to the time so everybody can say their piece, and so this broadcast isn't the length of Gone with the Wind. So first of all, let's hear from Tom Ash, one minute to talk about himself and his candidacy.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to Focus Springfield and to the viewers who are home tuning in tonight. My name is Tom Ash. I reside at 341 Gillette Avenue in Ward 7 in the city of Springfield. I'm a lifelong city resident. I am currently in my fourth term on the city council, after having served 10 years on the Springfield School Committee. I believe we have great reasons to be optimistic about the city of Springfield. There's currently over $3 billion in economic development projects, providing thousands of jobs for city residents. Our bond rating is at an all-time high, and crime is down 20% across the city. These are significant milestones. We have our challenges, to be sure, but we have had great successes that I think we all can be very, very proud of. I hope to continue to work shoulder-to-shoulder with Mayor Sarno to build on the city's successes and work diligently to combat our ongoing war on crime. Thank you; I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Ernesto Cruz. Ernesto?
Good evening. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Focus Springfield. My name is Ernesto Cruz. I'm a lifelong Springfield resident. I am someone that was once frustrated with politics and how things went in the city and became involved about seven years ago. Ever since then, I've been actively involved in getting more people out to vote, getting more people involved in the process, and that's what I'm here for. So whether you vote or not, your life matters to me, and that's something that I want to put front and center. Also, I'd like to say that I am most likely up on this stage to have to say I didn't know I was supposed to say that, and I think that's something that is very important because the community needs to be more involved in what happens, and I think we do that by leading by example and putting ourselves out there and letting people know what our motivations are and why we're in it. Thank you.
Next up is Victor Davila.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to Springfield Focus TV for putting this event together, and to you, the viewer, for allowing me into your living room to tell you more on myself and my candidacy to the Springfield City Council at large. My friends, my name is Victor Davila, and I am running for the Springfield City Council at large because I love Springfield. Springfield's a great place to live, work, and to raise a family, but like any other city, we have our challenges. Even though great gains have been made against crime, we still have a lot of work to do. We need to make sure the police department has the tools they need to protect you and I. My friends, we also have a little vacancy and blight throughout the city. This is why I have proposed a vacant restructuring ordinance to tackle vacancy and blight head-on. I look forward to telling you more on myself and my candidacy as the debate progresses. Thank you.
And thank you, sir. Next up is Kelly Moriarty-Finn. Kelly?
Good evening, and thank you to Focus Springfield and all the viewers out there and the panelists. I am Kelly Moriarty-Finn. I've been a citizen of the city of Springfield for 15 years. I have served on the Board of Directors for the Atwater Park Civic Association for the past decade, and I'm also a current member of the Community Police Relations Board founded by Council President Ramos. I'm asking for one of your five votes tonight because I'm deeply committed to the future of Springfield, and I believe that fresh faces and minds are needed to propel the city forward. Economic development and quality of life are inextricably linked. As a fiscally conservative counselor, I will advocate for economic development through the creation of a city-funded marketing plan, with one of the goals aiming to be increase our tax base. An increased tax base will provide more capital to quality-of-life initiatives for our seniors, our families, our veterans, and everyone. I look forward to the debate this evening, and thank you all for viewing.
And thank you. Okay, Justin Hurst would be next. Justin?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mike. Thank you to Focus Springfield. It's been an honor and privilege serving on the Springfield City Council for the last four years. I was born and raised in the city of Springfield, graduated from Springfield Central High School, and upon graduation, attended the University of Virginia. I always knew that I was very passionate about the city of Springfield, and I wanted to come back and give back to the city that had given me so much. So upon graduation, I attended the University -- I'm sorry, I attended Western New England College School of Law, and I also taught high school English full-time. I ran for election in 2011, again because I wanted to make a difference in the lives of 150,000 people, as opposed to just those that were in my classroom. So it's been an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Springfield. I hope to continue to make you proud, and I look forward to having your vote on November 7th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jesse Letterman is next. Jesse?
Good evening. I'd like to begin this evening by thanking the voters in the preliminary election for placing me among the top five candidates in the field. My name is Jesse Letterman. I was born and raised in Springfield, and I first got involved in community activism, working alongside residents, community organizations, and elected officials to stop the construction of a construction-and-demolition debris incinerator. That experience showed me the impact that local government can have in the everyday lives of residents, and inspired me to become more involved in the community. I've had the honor of serving Springfield on the Board of Directors of the McKnight Neighborhood Council, the Springfield Preservation Trust, and the Governing Board of the Springfield Renaissance School. Today, I work as a public health and environmental advocate, in which capacity I recently negotiated the repair of 500 gas leaks across the city of Springfield. I'm running for the city council at large to bring that same proactive approach and accessibility to local government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Janaye McDonald.
Good evening. I'm Janaye McDonald. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Springfield. I currently reside in the South End neighborhood of the city. I am the Western Mass Regional Manager for a statewide nonprofit that offers adult education and workforce training services. I am the lovely mother to three beautiful children. I'm a Springfield Public School volunteer. I'm on the city's Community Police Relations Committee. I'm a community activist, a small business owner. Now, more than ever, we need people who know how to bring our city together, to move our city forward, working with police officers, small business owners, job developers, and job seekers. I know how to get things done. With public safety, great-paying jobs, and stricken-era public schools among my top priorities, I humbly ask for one of your five votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Ryan is next. Tim?
Good evening. I'm Tim Ryan, and I'm a candidate for city council. My wife Maureen and I live here in Springfield, and we've raised five children, the last of whom is completing college. For the last 30 years, I've worked as a lawyer in downtown Springfield, handling a bunch of legal needs for our local residents. For 10 years, I was a member of the Springfield City Council from 1994 to 2003, and thereafter, I spent two years on the Springfield Police Commission. There's a lot of positive energy in Springfield right now; there's a lot of positive development in Springfield right now. It's important that the city council continues to foster this, and they do it by making sure we have the best police department possible, that the city finances are stable, and that the city works to remove blight in our neighborhoods, the blighted homes, the blighted buildings, one house, one street at a time. And those are the priorities I would work on as a member of the Springfield City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Kateri Walsh. Kateri?
Thank you, and like my fellow candidates, I would also like to thank Focus TV for this opportunity to reach out to the voters and to share our points of view. I am an incumbent city councilor. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Springfield, where my husband Danny and I have raised our seven children. I'm currently the Chair of the Maintenance and Development Committee for the city of Springfield, the Springfield Cultural Board, the Springfield Women's Commission, and I've recently been appointed to the Traffic Commission. I'm running because I believe tremendous progress has been made in the city of Springfield, and I would appreciate the opportunity to continue that progress. I think it's a great time in the city of Springfield. For the first time in a long time, there's optimism about jobs, education, and quality of life. So I appreciate this opportunity. I hope you will give me that chance to serve again. Thank you for electing me before.
And our last candidate to speak is Tracy Whitfield.
Good evening. Thank you, Focus Springfield, and Mike Dobbs, for having us here tonight. My name is Tracy Whitfield. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Springfield. I graduated from the High School of Commerce, and I went on to obtain my bachelor's in administration with a concentration in finance, and my master's in accounting and taxation from American International College. I am currently the Director for Contract Sales for a unique collaboration between Springfield Technical Community College and Holyoke Community College called TWO: Training and Workforce Options. The reason I'm running for city council is simple. I love our great city of Springfield. I love the diversity in our 17 neighborhoods, and I love our world-class parks. But most importantly, I love our residents in the city of Springfield. I am currently a homeowner in our great city, in the Liberty Heights area, and I'm on the Board of Sabbath International Charter School. I'm on the Board of the Association of Black Businesses and Professionals. I'm a member of the Community Partners Network to ensure that residents and -- okay, I'm going to stop here, but please vote for Tracy Whitfield. I have a lot to say.
Okay. We'll give you a chance. Don't worry. Okay, so during this first round, I'm going to ask each of you a question. Some of you may get the same question because I'm simply curious about certain types of issues and how you candidates think about it. So I'm going to jump around a little bit. Janaye McDonald. Janaye, many neighborhoods in Springfield are in a food desert, meaning they don't have easy access to a grocery store. There may be corner markets and that type of thing, but a full-service grocery store is not easy to find in much of this city. Now, if you're elected to the city council, would you work to try to change the situation?
Absolutely, Mike. I actually live, as I mentioned, in the South End, and just like you said, we have little small markets that provide some food, but I do not have a full-service grocery store. If I want to go to the grocery store without driving too far into the city, I actually have to go to the next city over into West Springfield. So one of the things that we need to do is actually read the zoning charter, and if I'm elected to the city council, you can bet your bottom dollar that I'm going to address some of the zoning issues that are downtown and look at rezoning some of the desert areas that we have, and that may have some environmental issues, so that we can provide grocery stores and other shopping places for city residents that live downtown, especially with some of the market-rate housing that's going to be coming to downtown. We need to make sure that we are giving people that currently live down there and the people that we are trying to attract to the city places to shop and improve their quality of life.
Thank you, Janaye. Tom Ash, I know you've been involved with law enforcement's issues on the city council, so let me ask you this. Should MGM Springfield be allowed to serve alcohol to those who are gambling until 4:00 a.m. through an exception to the city's closing time of 2:00 a.m.?
Mike, I know that's been an issue that's been talked about quite a bit of late. One problem that I see inherent with that is that it doesn't create a level playing field for the rest of the city, for the neighborhoods, the bars and the restaurants that are operating under one set of rules. So I'd have to be convinced pretty strongly otherwise that that makes sense somehow for Springfield. The law enforcement individual inside of me says that it's not the need to serve alcohol after 2:00 o'clock. To me, probably is more problems than it's worth, so again, I'd have to be convinced otherwise to move me away from that uniform 2:00 o'clock stoppage.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Kateri Walsh. Kateri, as an incumbent, I know that you have been dealing with this, so let me just ask you. The city has had an ongoing issue with its pension liability. It's something that people are worried about, about how it would affect the city's budget, operating budget, in the future. What are your opinions about that pension liability, and have you thought about ways that we can probably, that we can possibly deal with it?
Well, that's a very good question because I hope that people realize that our pension liability is the worst in the state, which I think is a disgrace, that it has been neglected for so long, and the Springfield City Council has actually attacked that problem by making sure that there were more resources put into the budget this year. It's actually a matter, I believe, of making it a priority with the budget, making sure that when they do all the budget hearings, which begin in January, and that's when people actually have more opportunity to influence what the final product will look out, that we come together and say we believe that this is a priority for the city of Springfield because there's so many people, we have so many people, future employees and retirees who are dependent on that. So I think we have a huge responsibility to bring it up and to make sure that we are not the worst pension in the state.
Thank you, Kateri. Next up, Tim Ryan. Tim, if you're elected to the city council, how would you keep MGM Springfield to the host-community agreement? What would you do personally to make sure that they actually live up to what they've been talking about?
As a lawyer, one of the things I would do is look closely at it to see what it calls for, and then see what the changes that have been allowed to date, but then as they go forward, they're the ones who have been asking for and been obtaining various allowances, various amendments to the host-community agreement. I would be very tough on changing that. Obviously, when they had the referendum, it was the 27-story glass tower that was the icing on the cake, and then they win the referendum, and the building goes sideways, and all those high-end and very fashionable looks have disappeared. So it might have been the bait and switch was played on the city of Springfield, but going forward, you have to be very tough. This is what you signed up for; this is what you promised; now deliver.
Okay, let me ask that question to one of the incumbents. Justin Hurst, you're an incumbent; you've been involved with this process about MGM. Are you satisfied at this point that they're keeping their promises, or are you concerned that there's going to be additional scrutiny from the city to make sure that they live up to the host-community agreement?
You know, I think there always has to be additional scrutiny. I think we always have to hold MGM to the fire, you know, and I think we have to certainly make sure we have a good understanding of the host-agreement and make sure that any changes that MGM proposes are changes for the good. What I am impressed with is the fact that MGM is fulfilling its responsibility when it comes to hiring veterans, when it comes to hiring workers from the city of Springfield, when it comes to hiring minorities, when it comes to hiring women, and I think that that's absolutely critical. That's something that I was very adamant about in terms of assuring that MGM was held to it, and it's something that I'm proud, that they're not only holding themselves to it, but exceeding those demands that we've placed upon them. So there's always more work to do, and we'll continue to be vigilant as a council. I'm proud of what we've done thus far in terms of holding them accountable, and we'll continue to do more in the future. Thank you.
Ernesto Cruz, could I ask you, some people in the city believe that there's been too much emphasis on downtown development, not enough emphasis on our neighborhoods. I wonder if you share that opinion, and if you do, if you're elected to the council, how would you try to change these priorities?
Actually, I do believe that the focus, at least in the news, I know that the administration and the council are very busy in every neighborhood. I attend a lot of neighborhood council meetings, but I do believe that there needs to be more emphasis placed elsewhere in the city, that there are a lot of individuals that they want to see their own neighborhoods doing better, and if all the emphasis is downtown, that takes away from elsewhere. I think it comes down to advocating for more CDBG funds. I know that the federal administration has been taking those out. I think that the council is a bully pulpit that could be utilized to advocate for more money from the state and federal government, and I believe that I would be an advocate to make sure that no matter what neighborhood it is, they get attention.
Okay, thanks very much. We've got a situation, and I'm going to ask this question to Victor Davila. We have a situation now that we in Western Massachusetts are facing, specifically, I would say, Holyoke and Springfield, and that is, there will be an expected influx of evacuees from the island of Puerto Rico, which, as we all know, has been absolutely devastated by Hurricane Maria. So if you were on the council, what would you try to do to make sure that the city is ready to supply the services to these evacuees? Because there's a number of services between housing and school and health that they're going to need because they're coming up here basically with absolutely nothing. So Victor, what would you do if you run the council?
Thank you, Michael. It's a great question. First of all, let me say thank you to you, the viewer, and to all those who have donated to my homeland of Puerto Rico with so many wonderful donations. I was recently in Tapley Street the other day wrapping up boxes to send back to Puerto Rico. So myself, I want to say thank you for your donations, for your help. As a city council at large, it would be critical in this critical times and times of crisis that we coordinate with local, state, and federal officials. Recently, somebody came up to me and said, "I need to go up to Massachusetts," but I don't have any IDs; I lost everything. So I spoke to a local credit union, and we're trying to work out a way that this person can open a bank account at one of the local credit unions. So for this, it will be something that we all have to work together to make sure that the housing and all the proper needs this person has are met.
Thank you very much, Victor. Kelly Moriarty-Finn, I was wondering if you support Representative Carlos Gonzalez's proposed changes to the Dover Amendment. And folks, if you're not aware of the Dover Amendment, it is a state law that allows educational institutions to locate anywhere they want without any concern about zoning or hearings or any of that nature. And in some Springfield neighborhoods, this has become a real issue. Representative Gonzalez has proposed an amendment that would give cities some control over the placement of group homes and other educational institutions. Kelly, what do you think about that?
I do wholeheartedly support Representative Gonzalez's proposed solution to amend the Dover Amendment. There are many, many neighborhoods within Springfield that have taken on more than the lion's share when it comes to group homes and educational facilities. Some streets have in excess of 10 alone. The problem is, it's not about the fact that we want to give people compassionate care and a wonderful place to recover and succeed because we all do. The problem is, we as city councilors and a local government do not have a seat at the table to help regulate where those are placed within our city, and that really needs to change. Again, I do support amending the Dover Amendment, specifically focusing on zoning.
Thanks very much. Tracy Whitfield, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Janaye McDonald because she lives in the South End, you live up toward the North End, about the food desert. In your neighborhood, for instance, how difficult is it for people to get access to a full-service supermarket?
So I actually live in Liberty Heights, and there's a grocery store right down the street. However, I grew up in the Hill-McKnight area, and it is a food desert there. It's very difficult because of several reasons: because of transportation, because of disabilities, because there's elderly in that community, and they can't get to the nutrition that they need in order to survive. I was on the Work in Cities grant team when it first came, and the supermarket was proposed in the Mason Square area. However, the grocery stores, for some reason, are not agreeing to move there. And so I think that as a city councilor and as a city as a whole, we need to go to the grocery stores and ask them why, and tell them what the advantages are to move into that area. So I do support, I do know that we need grocery stores in our area for a plethora of reasons.
Thanks very much. Jesse Letterman probably thought I forgot him. Nope, didn't forget him. Jesse, one of the key elements to being a city councilor is understanding the city budgeting process, understanding how to read a budget, and understanding what your role is in affecting a budget. So let me ask you this question. What kind of experience do you bring to these issues of budgeting?
Thank you very much for the question, Mike, and you're absolutely correct. The city budget is a very important part of the role of the city council in Springfield. My budget experience comes mostly from my community work, being on the Board of Directors of the McKnight Neighborhood Council, which managed CDBG funds that were awarded to it, as well as serving on the Governing Board of the Springfield Renaissance School, which manages several hundred thousand dollars in a budget. Essentially, on the city council, what's really important is that we are electing an advocate for the people, and understanding the needs of all 17 of our neighborhoods when we are going through the budget hearings is going to be one of the most important things, I believe, for our next at-large city councilors to understand. I also think that we need to have a strong dialogue with the mayor's administration, as that is who is actually writing the budget before it's presented to the city council. And so I want to open up a great channel of communication with Mayor Sarno and be able to bring the information that I get on the ground as a city councilor to him and to his department heads, and then holding them accountable to that throughout the budget process.
Thanks very much, Jesse. So now, we're going to turn to our panel, and the way this is going to work is each of them are going to ask three questions. They can ask any of the questions to any of you. If for some reason, some of you are neglected by their questions, don't worry; I've got questions to ask you, so you all get your moment in the sun here. So I think what we're just going to do is we'll first, they will go round robin, so Elizabeth Roman will ask a question, then Matt, then Morgan, and they'll do that three times. So we'll start with Liz Roman from the Republican Mass Live.
This question is for Janaye McDonald. You said that you are a resident of the South End. I would like to know how your relationship is with your current ward councilor, and do you work with them now, and if elected, how you would collaborate with them in the future?
I have a decent or a great relationship, actually, with my ward councilor. He actually appointed me to the Community Police Relations Committee. I think that moving forward, I want to work more with him if I'm, you know, elected as an at-large councilor, so that I can make sure that I'm looking in the best interest of not only the community that I live in, but for the city as a whole. I know that I'm also in the process of moving to Ward 4, so that's going to give me even more stretch to develop that relationship with my Ward 4 councilor, already have the relationship with my Ward 3 councilor, and make me a more effective at-large city councilor.
Okay, Matt?
Thank you. This question is for Tim Ryan, actually. The city of Springfield has a number of boards and commissions that are unfilled, unappointed, and frankly, just hanging out there doing nothing. Some of them have mandates that are required. For example, the Ethics Commission has a mandate that is required by ordinance; others aren't necessarily necessary by ordinance, but nevertheless exist. What would you do on the council to encourage that these commissions be filled, and would you pursue legislation to either strengthen them, weaken them, or, if necessary, abolish them?
Not to abolish them. Under Plan A, unfortunately, a lot of the authority is in the mayor's hands, and all of those, with the exception of the SRA, if there's still SRA commissioners, and the Housing Authority, all of the boards and commissions are appointed by the mayor without council input. So it's really a discussion with the mayor. As a lawyer, I've been in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and at various times, we've had difficulty, simply because there weren't enough members on the board to have a hearing. And so we have to speak to the mayor, and either the mayor does it, or we start in the budget process to say, "Mayor, if you're not going to do it, then we've got to take money away to kind of the stick to have the mayor..." money away," to kind of the stick to have the mayor appoint people to these boards and commission, because the work they do is vitally important, and sometimes, it's legally mandated. And without it, we're at a stalemate.
Morgan?
This question is for Jesse Letterman. The creative economy in Springfield generates $50 million annually, representing an excess of $2.5 million to the tax base. However, there's no sector-specific support, like across the state, like an office of creative economy. If elected, what would you propose to ensure creative businesses thrive and stay?
Well, let me begin by thanking Morgan for the great work that you're doing, and the members of the Springfield Central Cultural District are doing at bringing the creative economy to Springfield. And we have seen a really incredible boost in events downtown, such as the White Lion Wednesdays and the Thunderbird Thursdays, in basically creative placemaking that's bringing people to downtown Springfield, both from around the city and from the suburbs as well. We need to make sure that as the city council and the city of Springfield, that we are supporting those efforts at the cultural district, and also expanding them beyond downtown. I'd love to see more creative placemaking in Mason Square around the Basketball Monument, or in Indian Orchard around the antique stores that have and do exist there. We need to celebrate the diversity and the culture of all 17 of our neighborhoods, and I think that creative placemaking and partnering with the cultural district is a great way to get started on that.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I guess I'll go to an incumbent now. This one's for Caterie Walsh. So I guess when you've been on the council for a while, people or voters start wondering, "What have you done for me lately?" So what have you, what one or two initiatives have you implemented in the past term, in your past term, and how did you personally make sure that those things were achieved and accomplished?
Well, thank you for that question. One of the things that people are always interested in are jobs, and I created the Small Business Neighborhood Committee to help people navigate the red tape through City Hall, and worked with many great people who went to almost every neighborhood in the city, and met with people who had an interest in business, new entrepreneurs, and were able to give them information so that they could start a business. And I'm proud to say that I had a hand in bringing two businesses to the city of Springfield, FW Web, and I was able to help my friend Frankie Melzal with this innovative petty cab business. So I think people would like to know that I'm out there working for them, making sure that they have jobs and opportunity. Also, I've been pushing for high-speed rail, which I think is an economic engine for the city of Springfield. I sponsored the resolution for high-speed rail on the council, which was unanimously supported by my colleagues, and I'll continue to work for that.
Thank you. Matt?
This question is for Kelly Moriarty-Finn. Earlier this year, Mayor Sarno rejected an effort by activists to formalize a department, police department policy that kept the department out of essentially immigration enforcement as an attempt to try to maintain good relations with the immigrant communities, both documented and undocumented. As a councillor, where do you stand on this particular issue? And would you support codifying potentially what is essentially the policy that the department already holds, so that it cannot be changed unilaterally in the future and potentially upend our immigrant communities?
Well, first and foremost, I know that everyone around me tonight is from an immigrant family, one way or another. We will have soon neighbors and friends coming from Puerto Rico. We have people from every walk of life, every ethnicity, and many countries that we have welcomed to the city of Springfield, and that makes the city of Springfield a wonderfully diverse city to be in. What I feel is important is that we work in concert with our law enforcement to make sure that our men and women, whoever they come from, are welcomed, and that we create a path for them to feel safe, that we provide them with all of the necessary tools and services that can lead them to be productive citizens in the city of Springfield. I believe that if we do need to take a lens and look at codifying something, that we should leave nothing on the table, but we need to be respectful of where people have come from and be culturally sensitive.
Thank you. Morgan?
This question is for Justin Hearst. Public art is often seen as a method of public safety in cities across the states. Locally, in Boston, the police department has actually allocated funding to hire artists. How do you feel about unconventional methods of public safety and policing, such as utilizing artists and creative placemaking?
Thank you, Morgan. You know, I think there's always a benefit to utilizing artists and essentially bringing people to the city of Springfield, bringing more people to the downtown area. I think what you've done, you've done a phenomenal job, whether it's the painted pianos or the utility boxes that we have downtown. Whatever it is, it brings people out, and the more people that are out in the city of Springfield, frequenting our streets, frequenting our neighborhoods, the safer people feel. And what we need to do, Morgan, is we need to identify funds for you and possibly put a line item in the budget, supporting what you're doing in the Springfield Central Cultural District. I know we haven't placed a large emphasis on the arts, but the fact that, you know, $2.2 billion in economic activity was generated in 2015, I mean, that says it all. You know, the fact that you can have spinoffs from parking, from the mom-and-pop shops, reaping the benefits of just people being present to public safety, we need to do more of it. Thank you.
Mike?
Yes?
Just a clarifying point.
Okay.
The creative economy in Springfield actually generated $50 million in economic impact.
Okay.
I think I was referring to the entire state.
Okay, well, that's good. We want to make sure that we're definitive about these things. Liz?
My final question is for Victor Davila. Although the council has made its decision on residency, enforcement remains an issue. If elected, what ideas do you have, or how would you make sure that residency is enforced in the city?
Thank you, Elizabeth. That's a great question. First of all, let me say that the council has two main powers. One, the power of the purse, they approve the budget. And second, the bully pulpit. Residency is one of those things that has been talked about for years. I know that recently, the city council approved a contract with the fire department in which it requires these firefighters to live in the city, the new hires, for 10 years. I truly believe that we need to give preference first to the people that live here in the city of Springfield. I want the people that live here to work here. I also do believe that after a while, if a person decides to move out after they put in due time, that's something that that person has the right to do. Don't forget, they also have the right to mobility. So I'd be willing to look at duplicating what the council did with the fire department of requiring X amount of years, 10 years or whatever, to live in the city. I am concerned that we're going to leave talent out in the city. This is a great city, and I want the best talent here at the city.
Thank you, Victor. The next question will be asked by Matt.
And this question's directed toward Tracy Whitfield. In the city of Springfield, just like on all levels of government, there is an incredible amount of power that special interests have, whether they be in the form of landholders, business owners, sometimes that overshadows the voices of individual residents and communities themselves. As a councillor, especially one that's at-large and representing so many different interests, how would you balance that particular issue in council chambers?
So first, I believe that the residents need to be educated on what's going on in the communities. A lot of times, the power comes because there's not enough people to the table to advocate for themselves. And so we have to get our residents out to more community meetings and educate them on what's going on in the city. And then, we just have to hold firm. I will advocate for the residents. Businesses are also important, because they may too be residents, but no one should have absolute power to make decisions that go on in the city. So education is key. We need to let our residents know what's going on in the community and stand behind them in making decisions for the city.
Thanks very much, Tracy. Morgan?
My last question is for Tom Ash. Young, diverse, well-educated, creative workers currently represent over 1,800 full-time jobs within the city. However, many of these workers are moving outside of city limits due to lack of a creative environment. If elected, what would you propose to best attract and retain this important sector of our workforce, especially with large employers such as MGM moving into the city?
Well, I think that's a multifaceted approach to that problem, and one of them is to provide market-rate housing in the downtown area, and also to expand on some of the projects that have been mentioned, that you're closely associated with, the murals and the arts and so forth. You know, this is the first year that the city council has voted to fully fund the bid. In the past, it's always been a partial, $75,000, but this year, based on what we've all seen occurring in our downtown area through all the programs, we fully funded the bid for the first time, $150,000. So as we attract all these people into the downtown area, that hopefully has a spinoff where we're attracting some of that segment of the population that we really need, that would serve as a backbone to our downtown, to our city. So anything from arts and entertainment are things that we want to focus on.
Thanks very much. Ernesto, I get to ask you a question. Now, I'm going to, the next part of this debate, and I'm just delaying here, because I'm going to give everyone a chance to think here while I'm asking Ernesto. We wanted to incorporate a Lincoln Douglas one-on-one element to this debate, but how do we do this with 10 candidates? It's not really possible. But we came up with an idea that I think will allow the candidates to ask a question to one of their opponents for the at-large seats. So this is the way it's going to work. I will call on you. You get to ask anything you want within one minute to anybody else. And it's going to be free-form. So if you, all the new guys, if you pigpile on the incumbents, that's your decision, not mine. We're going to, so we're going to do that. So everyone think of who they want to ask a question of and what that question would be, and I'm going to ask Ernesto, so we're giving you some time to think here. Ernesto, I live in the Six Corners neighborhood, Six Corners and Maple High neighborhood of Springfield. I've lived there for 27 years, and I can tell you that our biggest issues aren't crime. I don't really worry about crime. I worry about noise complaints. I worry about garbage issues. I worry about all those quality-of-life things that really do add up to problems for people. And I know that my neighborhood is no different than any other neighborhood in the city. If you're elected to the city council, what would you do to try to shore up the ability of the city to deal with quality-of-life issues enforcement?
Well, that's a great question, and thank you. My biggest thing is, I'm proposing a people's budget, which is something where we vote on the budget, participatory budgeting, and then we allow each neighborhood to decide what they want to do with those funds. It'll be something like the Community Preservation Act, except for the residents, and they have full control over that. I came up with that idea, being a member of the Maple High Six Corners Neighborhood Council and then working as a legislative aide, going to different neighborhood councils all across the city. I heard the same complaints no matter where I went. And I think in a democracy, we need to have more transparency, more openness, and I think people don't mind paying a little bit extra if they know exactly where their money is going. It doesn't change anything in terms of the administrative budget, but it does give people faith in government, and that's something that I think will change a lot.
Okay, thanks very much, Ernesto. Okay, so now is the Lincoln Douglas section. So I'm just going to randomly call on a candidate, and you can ask a question, make it one minute long, to any of your colleagues here, and they get one minute to answer. So first of all, let's go to Tim Ryan first. Tim, who do you want to ask a question to?
Counselor Hearst.
Okay, shoot.
Justin, Counselor Hearst. In the city, the school department consumes or amounts to more than 50% of the budget, but the police department is the next biggest, most expensive city side or part of the budget that the city council can affect. So my question to you is, what things can you outline that the city council can do to improve the performance of our Springfield Police Department?
Thank you, Attorney Ryan. You know, first of all, you know, I want to make it clear that, you know, I think there are a lot of good things happening when it comes to our police department. I think the fact that, you know, we're at the point where we have 50 new recruits or new recruits on the horizon, the fact that you have a police substation going into Pension Plaza, the fact that you're going to have lighted-up booths in the downtown area, I think all those are positives. One of the things that I think is a drawback or something that we need to work on is we can't forget about our neighborhoods. When it comes to the functioning of the police department itself, we need to continuously speak out on the tough issues. And I think one of the hard things that, you know, that people will have the opportunity to do if they serve on the council is to be vocal when we feel as though transparency and accountability are being compromised. And as long as I serve on the council, I will continue to ensure that the residents are made privy of the issues that are occurring within our police department.
Okay, thank you. Justin, since you just spoke with an answer, let me give you a chance to ask someone a question. Who do you want to ask?
I'll ask it of Caterie.
Okay.
Caterie, I've heard you on a number of occasions touture your experience on this city council, and I think now that Counselor Williams will be exiting, as well as Counselor Brooks.
You're not going to ask me my age, I hope.
I promise I won't. But knowing that we're losing that experience, and knowing that I believe now you're the longest-serving councillor, or certainly close to it, what would you bring to the table to help backfill for what the councillors that we're losing would have been able to bring to the table from an experience standpoint?
Well, I think the question answers itself. I think what I bring is that experience, the institutional knowledge of the council, the relationships, the independence that make the council work. I look forward to being a mentor to the new members of the Springfield City Council, sharing my experience. But, you know, we all know, Justin, that on the Springfield City Council, in order to get anything done, you can have great ideas, but you also have to have seven votes to get anything done. And I believe I have the ability, you know, as the, as one of seven, as the mother of seven, I know how to get along with a lot of different people, and I've always respected different points of view. So not only do I think that I have the knowledge, I have the temperament to work well with others and to make sure that we work cohesively, which I like to say, our current council has done a great job of coming together on a lot of different issues from different viewpoints and doing what's been best for the city of Springfield.
Thank you very much. Okay, Victor Davila, you're up. Who do you want to ask a question to?
Thank you, Mike. My question will go to Jesse Letterman. Jesse, can you tell us, in your opinion, what, in your personal and work experience, the qualities that you bring and your experience in those fields that will enhance your service to the benefit of the people in the city of Springfield?
Well, thank you very much for the question, Victor, and of course, we've been able to work together for the last several years on many issues that face Springfield. When you ask this question, I think a couple of things come to mind. One is, my work, both my community and my professional activism, have brought me in close contact with local government for the last several years. So I've had the opportunity to work regularly and build relationship with members of the city council, city department heads, with state agencies and state legislators. And really, what we've been able to do is identify neighborhood issues, put those issues on the table, and find workable solutions that really get the job done. In that experience as well, it's taught me that if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, as a matter of fact, any of us that are elected, we will be only one of 13 voices on the city council. And so in order to accomplish what we're talking about here this evening, we're going to have to bring people together and build coalitions. That's what I've done for the last several years. I've built coalitions to solve problems in our neighborhoods, and I'll bring that same approach of bringing people together around our common interests and our common goals to the city council.
Thank you, Jesse. Tracy, it's your turn to ask a question of someone. Who do you want to ask?
Tim Ryan.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So I have worked with and know just about everyone else on that's running right now. You're the only one I really am not familiar with, so I just want to know, what have you done in the past, like, three years as far as community service and getting involved with the community?
In the past three years, I've been a member of two organizations, in addition to do my day job, which is a lawyer, representing all kinds of cases, handling all kinds of discrimination cases, race, gender, age, handicap. But in my, in my other work, what I've done is I've been a member of the Habitat for Humanity Board, and in the years that I've been there, we've built about 40 houses in greater Springfield. And I've also was a founder, though I'm no longer involved, in Re-Green Springfield, which after the tornado, we went out and got, raised money to plant about 1,500 to 2,000 trees in the tornado zone across the city. Other than that, I'm just kind of a, spend time with my kids and stuff.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, Tom Ash, it's your turn to ask someone a question.
Thank you, Mike. I think I'll gang up on Caterie a little bit.
Here we go, folks. Here we go, folks. Here we go.
We've had, I think, some great programs, initiatives, cater to the last several years, some of which we're seeing come to fruition now, like MGM and the CRCC. If you're elected over the next two years, what are some initiatives that you would like to see come to fruition?
Well, one of the things I'd like to talk about, because we've touched on it tonight, is the arts and culture as an economic opportunity for the city of Springfield. I've had the privilege to serve on the Springfield Central Cultural Board, so I know how hard people are working to bring the arts to downtown Springfield. But I think we need to do more. I think we need to create an office in City Hall that will oversee the arts and culture so that they will become that economic opportunity for so many people. And as I said before, I think we definitely have to push for high-speed rail, because I think that's an economic opportunity that will just open up Springfield to so many opportunities we haven't had before with housing, with our great housing, with jobs. And I really hope that I get to see that happen.
Thanks very much, Caterie. Ernesto Cruz, who would you like to ask a question of?
All right. I'd like to ask a question of Kelly Moriarty-Finn. All right, so Kelly, just wanted to ask you about the, basically, bail and your opinion on that, what you would say to young men and women of color that feel like the system's against them, and how that's not going to affect them negatively if you were to advocate that using the council as a bully pulpit?
Thank you for the question. The issue of bail is a very difficult one. Obviously, some people will feel that there are social justice implications. What I feel we haven't done a great job of on the city level is make sure that while bail is not a legislative issue, it's a judicial issue, that the city council try and be in lockstep with local judiciary to make sure that, especially for repeat offenders, we are doing something to make sure that they do not become repeat offenders. And if we do have to look at bail, it should be on an individual basis. It should not be colorblind. It should not be focused on gender. It should be colorblind, I'm sorry. But the focus should be on how do we make sure that we have the best city that we can possibly have? We have great programs like ROKA involved in our correctional facilities. We need to tap into them too, to make sure that they are educating our people before they are back in the workforce and back living with us as residents, that they do not need a life of crime.
I thank you very much. Okay, next up to ask a question is Janay McDonald. Janay, who would you like to ask a question of?
Okay, I would like to ask Tom Ash a question. Tom, as the Chair of Public Safety, I would like to know what is your hesitancy about the police commission? Being on the Community Police Relations Board, we know that improving community police relations is also about a certain level of police accountability. And you talked about a multifaceted approach to other topics. And I would like to know why you are hesitant to consider the police commission as a part of a multifaceted approach to addressing a police accountability, especially with the city having its largest payout in the last 10 years of last year with over $1 million for police misconduct.
Thank you, Janay. Appreciate the question. I think my position has been clear. I've been vocal on my opposition to a police commission. I think the police commission that we have now in place is one that has been very fair and been a good arbitrator when it comes to issues, whether it's hiring, firing, discipline, and promotions. I look back at history and I look at some of the police commissions that we've had in the past, and with the idea that somehow removes politics from the equation is inherently wrong. We've had some good commissioners. I think Tim Ryan was an example of good commissioner. We've also had poor ones. We've made promotions and hirings that were based not on what you were, but who you knew. And so that's the basis of my opposition to the police commission. I understand and I'm mindful that it's not a perfect system, but I think it's a better system than the one that's been presented, or the one that's been presented as an option.
Thank you, Tom. Jesse Letterman, you're up next. Who do you want to ask a question to?
I will return the favor to my colleague, Victor Davila. Victor, of course, knocking on doors across the city, we talk with thousands of residents of both of our campaigns, and there's so many issues that come up before us and that residents are curious about in the city. My question to you is, what do you think is the most important issue facing Springfield in the next two years?
Thank you, Jesse, for that great question. My friends, I was recently door-knocking a local neighborhood, and I literally saw five vacant houses within half a mile to each other. That's no good. Every time we have vacancy and we have blight, your property value goes down. As a way to address that, I have proposed a vacant registration ordinance, which aims to requiring the property owners and those houses in danger of foreclosure to register where the city has vacant and with plans for the upkeep of the houses. I also want to close a loophole within the city ordinance, it's chapter 285, that only allows the city to charge 50% of the market price when they go in and clean a house that is blighted. That's not fair to you. So every time we have vacancy and blight, not only does your property value goes down, but you also have to foot the bill for somebody else to clean the property. That's not fair. As a city council at large, I will tackle the issue of vacancy and blight head-on, because we have to bring the city back to the city of homes.
Thanks very much. Kelly, it's your turn to ask a question of anyone here. Who do you want to talk to?
Thank you. My question is for Jesse Letterman. Jesse, the organization for which you work, Arise for Social Justice, states that one of its goals is, and I quote, "is to force policymakers to adopt legislation that supports the organization's agenda." As a director for Arise, do you see any potential conflict of interest this presents if you are elected to city council? And how will you explain to voters how you really represent who you vote for?
Certainly. Thank you very much for the question, Kelly. I'm a private consultant. I do work for an organization called Arise for Social Justice. I've been very clear, both with my family and my friends, that my intention is to leave Arise for Social Justice at the end of December. If I am sworn in as a city councilor, I will be accountable only to the voters who have elected me to that position. And I'll add that there are a number of incredible organizations across our city who work to hold elected officials accountable. They represent as many constituents as city councilors do in some cases. And so one of the things that I've really, the experiences that I'll be glad to take away from my work as a public health and environmental consultant is that relationship with organizations, because I understand how important they are. And I think it's also important to recognize our relationship with the constituencies, which is why I've pledged to hold town hall meetings across Springfield to stay in contact and stay accountable to the residents and the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Well, because she was the only candidate that got two questions, I thought it would be only fair to give Caterie Walsh the last word here. So she is going to be able to ask any one of her colleagues here a question. Caterie, who do you want to direct that question to?
Well, let me take a look around the room and make everybody very nervous. But I am going to ask Jesse Letterman, my new neighbor, how he feels about the issue that I like so much, high-speed rail.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor Walsh. And Counselor Walsh has given me an opportunity to share that this year, my partner, Emila, and I were so proud to be able to fulfill a dream that both of us have had for a long time of becoming homeowners in the city of Springfield. And we are very proud to have fulfilled that this summer and to be working to bring back a historic home in the city's Forest Park neighborhood to its former glory. I think that the issue of high-speed rail is one of great importance. I know that Senator Lesser has been working hard to advocate to bring high-speed rail from Springfield to Boston. And I think that it is a very important, very important initiative that I am very proud to support. As Kelly has made possible for me to share that I will be leaving my position with Arise at the end of December, I will be in the job market. And I think it's very important, especially for other young professionals who are looking for positions, to be able to say, we might be able to go forth east to Boston and still make our home in the city of Springfield, and vice versa, attract people from Boston who are working there now and dealing with a very high cost of living to come out west and join us in the city of homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. I want to thank all the candidates for them taking the time to participate in this forum. We now are going to give each of them one minute for a closing statement. We started with Tom Ash, and went in alphabetical order. I'm going to go in a reverse alphabetical order and start with Tracy Whitfield. Tracy, what would you like to say?
So I am a no-excuse, solution-based person. I am committed to working with the residents to bring solutions. I work on committees that attack, I'm sorry, target youth literacy. We, I'm a homeowner, so, and a business owner. And in my business, each year, I have encouraged one person each year to purchase a home, and it's important. So I'm going to work hard to bring the resources to our community, but also work with our community to make sure that it's safe, to make sure that people are staying in their homes. I have been talking to senior citizens. They are losing their homes because they can't afford the taxes. They're not getting the discount at age 65, so it's hard. So I'm committed to working with the community and making sure solutions are made, and we're working together to help all people in the city of Springfield.
And now Caterie Walsh.
Thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity to reach out to the voters. And I am hoping that as a result of this, more people will go out and exercise their right to vote in a democracy. But I believe that I bring the experience, the dedication, and the independence that's going to move Springfield forward. I think it's a very exciting time in the city of Springfield. Many projects are coming due. We're getting a handle on more opportunities in our schools, improving our schools, opportunities for more citizens to get involved through sector meetings, and it's just a great time to be involved in the city of Springfield. I'm very proud of my record of empowering women and girls, of supporting the arts, supporting our veterans, working hard to bring jobs, making sure that Springfield is the kind of place that you can live and bring up a family, a great place to live and work. And I would appreciate the opportunity to return to the council and fulfill those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Ryan.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you to the panelists here for taking your time and being with us tonight. I'm asking for one of your five votes to be re-elected to the Springfield City Council. I served for 10 years, from '94 to 2003. So I have day-to-day experience in the issues that are down there. Having been away from it, I do have some of the distance so that the day-to-day issues don't all of a sudden become too big, too large, too consuming. Having worked on the Springfield Police Commission, I have some idea as to what the strengths of the department, what we can do to make it stronger in addition to probably trying to find the money, put on additional manpower. In my professional life as an attorney and as a volunteer, I've worked on blighted housing. I've been in housing court on innumerable cases having to do with blighted housing and turning those big buildings around. And as a volunteer, I've helped either renovate homes or build new ones. So I'd ask for your vote on November.
Thank you, Tim. Janay McDonald.
Yes. As a mother and a head of household, and someone who is on the brink of being a first-time homeowner, and being able to keep my family afloat, graduate from college, and become a professional in this city, I know how to help others pull themselves up by the bootstraps, and that makes me a master of budgets. I have been fearlessly dedicated to this campaign. I am a new candidate, first time running, and I like to think that I've done a great job so far getting myself through the preliminary. And I want to take some of those same tactics, the dedication, the organization, and the hard work and the collaborations that I've built, and bring those skills to the city council. So I humbly ask for one of your five votes on November 7th, so that I can be a voice for all communities.
Thank you very much. Jesse Letterman.
I want to thank Focus Springfield for hosting us here this evening, my colleagues for providing a rigorous conversation, and all of you at home for tuning in. On November 7th, you'll go to the polls and vote for five at-large Springfield city councilors. I've spent the last eight years of my life working together with residents, community organizations, and elected officials across Springfield to find the issues that our neighborhoods face, bring them to the table, and find real, workable solutions for them. In this campaign, we've been able to knock on nearly 10,000 doors, made thousands of phone calls, and attended countless community events across Springfield. I've had the opportunity to talk with residents from the North End to East Forest Park and everywhere in between. Those conversations have given me so much confidence in the future of our city. And now I'm asking for your vote and your trust to ensure that all of our neighborhoods are part of that future and that all of our families are able to live well in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
And thank you. Justin Hearst.
Thank you so much, Mike, for moderating. Thank you so much to Focus Springfield. Thank you to our panelists. Thank you to my colleagues who are running for office. It's not easy. It's not an easy thing to do, and the fact that you guys are willing to put yourselves out there, you are to be commended. It's been an honor and privilege serving the city of Springfield. I'm passionate about this city. I believe in this city. I'm optimistic about what the future might bring. I think with strong leadership, I think with devoted leadership, I think with dedicated leadership, we can all work hard to bring the solutions to the city of Springfield that this city needs. So we need to continue to improve on the things that are working well, and then we can need to continue to be a voice on the things that are not working so well. And I plan to be that individual that is going to speak to the tough issues that matter most to you. Thank you very much, and I would appreciate your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Kelly Moriarty-Finn.
Thank you. I've been very pleased and I'm very proud of my candidacy this year, but I could say the same thing about everyone that is sitting beneath me and aside me. We've led exemplary campaigns this year, and if I am elected and have the ability to serve the citizens of Springfield, I will not disappoint. Since 2002, Springfield has been my home by choice. I am so excited to work alongside seasoned veterans on the council and new members of the council to effect positive change, to make sure that families are safe in their homes, that we hold MGM accountable, that we make sure that promises made are promises kept, and that economic incentives that we realize and recognize from the casino are sprinkled and redistributed back to each one of our 17 neighborhoods. Again, I ask for your support. I thank you, and I welcome your vote on November 7th.
Thank you very much. Victor Davila.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to the panelists and to you, the viewer, for allowing us into your living room to tell you about ourselves and our candidacy. My friends, when I say that I love Springfield, I really love Springfield. Springfield is truly a great city. When I came to Springfield, I spoke no English, I slept in shelters, and ate at food pantries. The good Lord and Springfield has now given me a wonderful wife, who's actually here in the audience today, Sonia, and this Friday will be celebrating 15 years of marriage, a son, a business, wonderful friends, and a solid education. I attended Westwood State College. I have a degree in political science and economics. And like my colleague here, Tomasz, I also have public safety experience. I'm a paramedic, and also I attended a part-time police academy. My friends, I really want to serve you as your city councilor. November 7th, we're going to have an election. You're going to have five votes. I need your help. I ask that you give me one vote for the Springfield City Council at large. My friends, my name is Victor Davila. I'm running for the Springfield City Council at large, and I ask for your vote. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Victor. Ernesto Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and viewers as well. Just want to, first off, I got a couple of text messages saying, got it off my phone. I don't have notes. I'm big into technology, and I'd like to use that for the city. Also, I'd like to say that I take public service seriously. There's nothing I want to do more than help people's lives be better. That's the only reason why I'm doing this, and that's why I keep moving forward no matter what obstacle or adversity is placed in my way, and I know that others do the same thing. But I have an unapologetic dedication to being a public servant. And I think that if we focus on the people, right, 85% of people don't come out to vote, sometimes more, we'll do better things for the city. And I just want to do great things for the city, for everyone, whether you vote or not. I think that we can lift everyone up. I think that people don't necessarily have to be forgotten, and I think that they're valuable to bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is Tom Ash.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to all who played a role in sponsoring tonight's forum. I think it was excellent. It was a great way for all the candidates to put out the issues that are most important to them. I've spent the last, better part of the last eight years wholly focused on issues around public safety. I have chaired the Public Safety Committee of the city council each of the eight years that I've served under four different presidents. I'm extremely proud of the accomplishments that we've seen in the overall crime stats that have gone down. I think that's a great motivator for us to continue to do the good work. But I'm mindful that we can never sit back and rest on our laurels. The ongoing war on crime must be fought every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I hope to continue my work to ensure that our officers in both the police and fire department have the resources that they need to perform their duties well. I will continue to work with the mayor to advocate to the judicial system to make sure that the most violent criminals are kept off the street. Thank you again for tuning in tonight, and I respectfully ask for one of your votes on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
On behalf of Focus Springfield, I'd like to thank all the candidates and our panelists tonight for participating in this debate. This is going to, of course, be rerun on Focus Springfield, so you have an opportunity to really study what they have to say and make a decision on this very important election on November 7th. Thanks once again for tuning in, and remember to vote on November 7th. in, and remember to vote on November 7th.